Welcome to the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. I welcome each of you here, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. If we could, at this point in time, Stan and Ms. Belinda Whitten of the Bent Oaks House of Prayer will lead the prayer. Thank you, Ms. Whitten.
Thank you. If y'all bow your heads for prayer. Lord, we open up this meeting today with the words, "In God We Trust." These are the very words Congress passed declaring in our national motto in 1956. We come today praying over these elected officials to do just that, trust. Trust in your leading this body of government here in Granberry, to call upon your wisdom for all the decisions you place upon each individual here today, and to carry out your will for Granberry. Give each member here the mind of Christ as they perform the duties of their office, and we ask for a holy covering over all today. In God we trust. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and the Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to move right along to number four. Proclamation and presentation. There are no proclamations tonight, no presentations, so I'm going to turn to our city manager and ask if there are any encouraging statements for city staff.
You bet. I would just want to say that we've experienced a computer problem here at city, and staff is working hard behind the scenes to be able to carry on the functions of the city organization, and have been very creative in ways to work through these obstacles, and I want to give my hat off to them for persevering and keep plugging, and we're still not mended yet, but we're getting there, and we're going to hopefully make some progress by the end of the week. So, thank y'all for all your hard work and being able to patch through and make it. And, of course, the staff is doing an incredible job. Our IT team and our service provider is working so hard around the clock to make all these things come together to where we have a complete system once again. So, it's not a matter of when you're going to be hacked, it's not a matter of if you're going to be hacked if you're the local government, it's a matter of when is what I've decided. So, as y'all know, we've taken all kinds of precautions, but still, we're vulnerable, so that's kind of the world we live in.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
I think, as most people know, back in April, we had a great Granberry cleanup. Where about 150 people from the community went out, and we picked up trash all around the city, mostly up and down 377. We collected over one ton of trash, which was pretty impressive. There's been some articles written about it in the newspaper about the event, and I also just wanted to point out, we got the latest August edition from Texas Town and City, and we were featured in there, and our Director of Communications, Jeff Newfert, wrote the article and did a terrific job, so I just wanted to point that out. Jeff, great job, and I went through some of the details and talked about how the city all came together for one common objective, and that was to clean up our town, so just wanted to recognize Jeff.
Very good. Other comments up and down through here? Just see the gentleman in blue in the back, thank you for being here, and that blue out in 105 degrees, we really thank you for being with us. All the staff, great job, and this issue that we're having with our computers, these guys started at early 1:00 on Sunday morning, and they've been with us ever since. In fact, I went into the break room today, and there is a, what's this special coffee machine they have in there they're making? What's the special? What is it? What?
Espresso.
Espresso, yes. We now are serving espresso in the break room, and if those guys want something else to go with it, we're going to get that for them, too. Thank you. Others? We're going to move right along then to public comments on agenda items, which are for non-public hearing agenda items. I think we have one maybe that's a non-public hearing, and speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing, and the public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is opened, and I encourage you, if you want to speak on one of the public hearings, if you will, go ahead and sign in now and before that event. But at this one, I have two people that have asked to speak on non-public hearing items. Mr. Richard Hafes is here. If you could come and identify yourself and your address so that we may contact you if need be.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mr. Hafes.
Councilmember, city manager. My name's Richard Hafes. I live at 428 Riverbank Lane here in the great city of Granberry. I've been looking at the Hood Central Appraisal District budget, known as HCAD, and have some concerns about it, but before we get to the budget, I want to talk a little bit about the HCAD itself. We have a board made up of four people. Councilman Rodriguez is our representative on the board, and I think they have quite a challenge ahead of them. Three of the four board members are relatively new, and I think they've got a couple freight trains headed straight down towards them when they got on the board. One was the new building that's been proposed, the other one was the resignation of the chief appraiser. When I look at the budget, there are several things that give me pause. The first is that the projected revenue is $267,000 more than projected expenses. Since the expenses are billed back to the taxing entities in the county, I would like them to be relatively close, and that seems like a significant gap. Looking at the historical budgets, there's been a couple hundred thousand dollars difference every year, and it appears that HCAD has decided to keep that money. I know that's in your staff report, so I won't go into any details there. There are a couple of specific line items that concern me. One is adding a new deputy chief appraiser. The reason given in the budget is to make sure someone's in charge when the chief appraiser's out of the office. Well, that should be assigned to some other employee. That shouldn't be a justification for adding an additional headcount. Secondly, is a $200,000 line item for land and a new building, which I don't believe has been approved, and I think is premature. The interim chief appraiser, Mr. Petrie, has said that the office runs inefficiently. There's fewer number of parcels per appraiser and way too many appraisal review board requests. So, when the board hires a new chief appraiser, I think it would be prudent for the new chief appraiser to make a plan to address the various issues, the issues of the facility where there's not enough conference rooms and certainly no public restrooms, the issue of efficiency, the issue of customer service, the issue of how many people really are needed, and then go forth with the budget that reflects those plans rather than baking in solutions to symptoms rather than addressing the root issue. So, for all those reasons, I urge you tonight to reject the proposed budget, send it back to HCAD, to have a more limited budget, and then come back later with a proposal on how to improve HCAD and obtain the funding for that at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hafes. The next person I have is Mr. Dave Eagle. If you could give us your address, please, that'd be great.
Dave Eagle, 2615 Hillside. I'm speaking to the same agenda item 7.12 regarding the proposed resolution for the appraisal district. Texas Tax Code 6.06J, I'm going to read the first sentence. If the total amount of payments made or due to be made by the taxing units participating in the appraisal district, that's you, and that's us, the county, exceeds the amount actually spent or obligated to be spent during the fiscal year for which the payments are made, the chief appraiser shall credit the excess amount against each taxing unit's allocated payments for the following year in proportion to the amount of each unit's budget allocation for the fiscal year for which the payments are made. I point that out because I was, it was suggested yesterday in Commissioners Court, which, by the way, we passed a resolution to disapprove of the budget yesterday, 5-0 vote in Commissioners Court, but it was suggested to me that that statute is not clear, and the only comment that I can make about that is it's about as clear as I've ever seen. The only word that might be an issue is "or obligated," and I know that the board has taken a position that they've obligated funds for a building fund, but they did that outside the parameters of the statute. They are not entitled to do that, and they don't have the legal authority to do that. That money is just sitting there at this moment, and really tagging on Mr. Hafes's comments, we need to look at, maybe going back five years and looking at the appraisal district's fund balance that's unallocated, because every year there's an extra fund I present to you that that statute is very clear. It says what it says, and I think the surplus money that's being put into a building fund is premature. It has to be run by each taxing entity. So, I'm kind of stepping through here because I forget you only give us three minutes. At this point, I'm going to urge you guys to highly consider disapproving this budget, sending it back to the drawing board. They have an assistant chief appraiser on this budget, which I don't believe they need. They've got some extra funds in there that they don't need. They've got an extra, two appraisers, in my opinion, that they don't need based on Mr. Richard Petrie's evaluations. So, I would ask you that when you get to this agenda item, that you highly consider sending it back to the drawing board and having them relook at their budget. That's all I've got till later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Former Mayor Frye, the meeting, or the 7.12 is not, I consider to be a public notice. Would you like to speak at this time? See here?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
Mayor, council, I'm Rick Frye. I live at 8106 Godly Road in Granberry. I'm on the board. We took over the board basically a year and seven months ago, and there was only one remaining member. We have subsequently tried to improve things on the board because what we found it was not in good shape as far as the district was gone. We've made some great strides in the administrative side with some motivational things, trying to improve morale, things like that, and that was relatively simple to do because they were eager to have some leadership. We lost our chief appraiser. He was pressured somewhat by a work improvement document that we gave him and put him on probation, and he decided to leave on his own, which is fine, and subsequently, we got a veteran as our interim and who does a lot of things throughout the state, and we have learned lots, I'll just tell you, we've learned a lot, that we didn't get a class that said, okay, here's 6.06, here's how it says, here's what you do. We don't have a city attorney or a county attorney sitting beside us. We don't really have that benefit, and we have to do things as they go, and we followed the history of what was handed to us by previous boards and the recollection of the one remaining board member and moved forward. We did it in good faith. We didn't do it to misrepresent the taxpayers of Hood County especially, or any of the tenancies that we represent. We did it honestly. The money's not hidden. Those excess funds were put in good faith towards the need for a building improvement, whether it's a new building or whatever we decide to do, and they think, it was represented to me that this was what they had planned to do, and that's why we kept doing that. And if the entities want that money back, it's there. There has been some spent. It's accounted for. Previously, before we got on the board, those began to accrue. They did some building surveys. I will tell you, as things have been revealed, to me, it's quite clear that we didn't follow the letter of the law, but it was not done intentionally. We felt like that everybody was on board, that they realized that that money was basically an escrow and an account so that if we built a building or we improved a building, we had a nest egg that we wouldn't have to come to y'all and say, oh, we want more money to operate. As far as the deputy, the chief deputy, excuse me, that was left in the budget because we don't have a chief appraiser. If we have a chief appraiser, we want to give them the flexibility to be able to organize the district office the way it needs to run most efficiently. It's been pointed out, we're light-years behind in software. We need to get technology up to par with other districts, that there are some labor-saving things that can be made available to us if we do that. I'll be honest, I'm not an expert in that. I didn't know that where their technology was, but there's several things have been pointed out to us that there are some efficiencies. If you send back the budget, that's perfectly within your purview. I would just ask that you work with us and that you help us create a budget that is effective and efficient and leads to a better product for all the 10 entities, and that's all I can ask, because we're not doing this maliciously. We didn't do it to deceive. We want to do the very best job we possibly can for the people we serve, and that's our point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, and I know that I'll get some feedback on, gee, let former Mayor Frye speak up, and that's my way of saying thank you to the board for when you had the budget meeting, and you let me talk well over the three minutes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I also want to emphasize that I will be talking on 7.12, and my emphasis will begin and it will end with thank you for the existing board that is there at this point in time. They have been asked to do this by us, the schools and the county. They have volunteered, they have raised their hands, they have accepted this non-paying position, and, yeah, it's, they inherited, the need was recognized, they inherited it, and they have been working to make sure that we get this right for the county and the school and the citizens. So, do we have anyone else? Ms. Walker? No one else has come forward? Fine. Let's move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, do we have any of the items that you would like to pull off the consent agenda? Okay. I see no one asking to have anything pulled off. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes the second. We'll have a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. The consent agenda has passed 6-0. Thank you, counsel. Move right along to number, the deliberation agenda, number seven. Number 7.1 is a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing after staff has had their input. It's Considerate Request of Legends Land Development, LLC, to preliminary plat a 155.9 acre tract of the Joshua Minute Abstract, number 351, and the J. Campbell Land Survey Abstract, number 123, as lots 1-21 Block 1, lots 1-35 Block 2, lots 1-99 Block 3, lots 1-25 Block 4, lots 1-16 Block 5, lots 1-7 Block 6, lots 1-38 Block 7, lots 1-14 Block 8, lots 1-13 Block 9, lots 1 and 2 Block 10, lots 1 through 16 Block 11, lots 1-13 Block 12, lots 1-26 Block 13, lots 1-26 Block 14, lots 1-5 Block 15, lots 1-6 Block 16, lots 1-9 Block 17, lots 1-28 Block 18, lots 1-15 Block 19, lots 1-18 Block 20, lots 1-12 Block 21, lots 1-65 Block 22, lots 1-33 Block 23, lots 1-35 Block 24, lots 1-8 Block 25, lots 1-4 Block 26, and HOA lots 1X-7X of Legacy Ranch. The property is located at the, at west of 2200 Fall Creek Highway, and the site was withdrawn by the applicant in a letter with a received date stamp of July the 19th, 2023. So, this one has been withdrawn. That's the longest item that we have to read. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal letter as to the preliminary plat as written.
Will you be reading through these lot numbers?
Second.
And Ms. Burwell made a second on that. Do I? Is there comments?
Yeah, Mayor, can you repeat that again when you make that?
Mr. Wadley?
He said that, no.
I know that you have your, you haven't done.
Get your microphone.
I have a legal counsel here that says I should open the public hearing if anyone else wants to talk about these blocks. No? No one? No one? I'm going to go ahead and close this. So, I do have a motion, and I do have a second. I'll call for a vote to withdraw this deliberation item. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It passes with 6-0. I'm going to just take a moment. When I walked in, I just walked over, I walk in by, and I made eye contact with Protem Burwell, and she said no. Now, I know why she said no. If I'd have seen this, I'd have asked. Okay, number 7.2 is a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-50, amending select sections of the City of Granberry zoning ordinance. Amendments proposed are to Article 1, Section 1.8, Classification of New and Unlisted Uses, and Section 1.1, Certificates of Occupancy and Compliance, Article 2, Section 2.1, Board of Adjustment, Section 2.3B, Public Hearing and Notice, and Article 3, Nonconformity, Section 3.1, Nonconforming Uses and Structures. The general purpose of this amendment is to clean up confusing language, offer administrative actions, and ease the usability of a zoning ordinance administration. This will be ordinance number 23-50. Mr. Kaufman.
Sure. For the sake of time, I'll just introduce Craig Farmer. He is our consultant that's been working on our zoning ordinance to bring about some changes to make staff more efficient, make this process less burdensome. This is the initial change that we're going to bring to you. We're going to be working continually in the coming months to make more changes, recommendations to you. This has been through the planning and zoning, so now it's coming to y'all. I'll let Mr. Farmer tell us all about it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor, members of city council, my name's Craig Farmer with Municipal Planning Services, LLC. I'm your consultant on this project. Originally, it was intended that we would run through this in basically just three phases. One's doing the research, one would be rewriting the amendments, and then bring the whole package to y'all. What we discovered fairly quickly was there are a lot of amendments that were needed that dealt with the administrative side of the ordinance, not so much the individual uses and things, and we found that we could add a lot of flexibility, streamlining, to the ordinance quickly, and so that's why we're bringing these to you. Basically, we're looking at Articles 1, 2, and 3. I will run through them, and I'll try to go fairly quickly. If you have a question at any point, if you want to ask me, then that's fine, or at the end, I can deal with it either way. I will say that the city attorney's gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, and I've made all his changes, and the director also made a lot of changes, too. So, I think these are good. Under Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1.0, New and Unlisted Uses, we set up a process where if you have unlisted uses in the use chart, your director of community development or their, can't think of the word all of a sudden, anyway, can make the determination of the nearest classification in the use chart and assign it to that. You've had some uses in the past that had to go through the Long Planning and Zoning Commission and city council process when they were so close to an existing use, but it didn't say exactly that. There are some guidelines in there and some criteria as to when they can do it. If there's an appeal of the director's decision, it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council, just like it does now, but that should add some flexibility on those use charts as to some of those uses not being very narrowly defined. The next item is Interpretations of Requirements in Your Ordinance, Section 1.8, Point B, Paragraph 1. Again, the community development director will now make interpretations of requirements in the ordinance if a question comes up, and the ordinance isn't real clear. The director or their designee can make a determination of what, how that should be interpreted, and then if there's an appeal of that, that one's to the city manager's office. After checking with the city attorney, that one goes to the Board of Adjustments because the state statute says interpretations of regulations go to them. Next item is 1.8, New and Unlisted Uses. We think this one's going to help a lot. We are providing for administrative modification of regulations, setbacks, area requirements, those sorts of things. The director can provide up to a 10% modification, administrative modification, to a requirement. So, for example, if a side yard setback is six feet and somebody pours the foundation and discovers they encroached six inches, the director could give a 10% modification to that setback, and it wouldn't have to go to the Board of Adjustments anymore on some of those kind of things. It's also in a number of parking spaces. There can be some adjustments up to 10% up or down, and landscaping and the number of trees, there'd be some provisions in that. Again, there's criteria in there, and appeal of the director's decision, again, I'm sorry, on the previous two, the appeals are to the city manager's office, and then if the person that is making the appeal is not satisfied, then the appeal is to the Board of Adjustments on that one. Under the general provisions, we've, the state statute has been amended on nonconforming uses, especially when it comes to amortizing them or putting them out of business. You don't have a big history of having done that. It's a very legally intensive process, but you do have a lot of nonconforming uses, which are things that are in existence legally in existence in one point in time, and they were either annexed or the ordinance was changed, so they're now no longer conforming to the ordinance. They're considered nonconforming, and a strict interpretation would say you can't touch those or change them, you have to leave them exactly as they are. The ordinances have provisions for expansion and modification, but it was still pretty tight, and there's been some complaints in the past. So, we went into the definition of certificates of nonconforming, and there is a registration process, and the state statute forces this also. You already had one, but we're going to clarify that with the state law. Basically, you have to register a nonconforming use when it's made nonconforming. The city will issue you a certificate of nonconforming so you can document the fact in case somebody comes by and says you need to stop doing that. You can say, no, I'm legally nonconforming, and then there's a process of how that's handled. If you don't register it within the timeframe that's in here, it says if you bring documentation later, you can still get a certificate of nonconforming, so it's not a drop-dead date. It's just, that is a better way to handle it within the timeframe. Section 2, Administration, you've had a lot of problems with variances and special exceptions dying at the end of 90 days unless those board, unless the Board of Adjustments puts an extension to. puts an extension timeframe in there. People aren't gonna spend a lot of money on a site plan or construction plans and financing if they don't even know if they can do it. So once they get permission from the Board of Adjustments, either the variance that they're looking for or the special exception, you know, three months is not a lot of time to pull it together and get a building permit. That has been extended to one year, and then the director also has leeway to add another one hundred and eighty days, almost six months, if they've been making substantial progress on working out financing problems, or they may not have even bought the land yet, and if there's a problem doing that. So this should help on some of those situations that have come up in the past where people have had to not only go back to the board for a new variance, but pay the fees, notice has to be sent out again, et cetera. Under Section two point three amendments to the zoning ordinance, this is your public hearing and notice, two point three, point B, where you have to send notice to everybody within two hundred feet on a zoning change. The new state statute that was, became effective June first, not September first, it's been effective for two months now. What it requires is if you, if they're, if you're gonna rezone property or amend the text, and there's a possibility of making a use nonconforming, then they require you to send written notice to the property owner according to the tax rule, but also to an occupant or a tenant, and, which is a serious problem defining how that works. What we're suggesting is that notice be sent to the, not only the owner of the property, but the business and personal property owner also, which quite often will pick up tenants and those sorts of things. But also, we suggest that there be a method trying to find the occupant. We, well, I'll talk about the rest of it in just a second, but the first issue is the notice. On every notice that goes out that might create a nonconforming use, you have to put in fourteen-point font text, "The City of Granbury is holding a hearing that will determine whether you may lose the right to continue using your property for its current use. Please read this notice carefully." Our recommendation is just stick it on every notice, you know, if there's a possibility that there might be a problem. So Section two point three amendments to the zoning ordinance, quite often, and I've had, just recently had a couple situations where someone did not receive the proper notice. The city was going to delay the Board of Adjustments case in this one for a month. I've used this process on others. I said, well, you know, why don't you go by and get a waiver of notice from that person? If the person's okay with it, and you explain what the situation is, and they give you a waiver of notice, then you can continue on. And so we are making that provision in there. If someone doesn't receive notice, but they're okay with the case and don't wanna hold it up, that they can waive their right to notice. On the flip side, if they, if they're opposed to the case or something, they can insist that it be read advertised and delayed. Again, the city attorney has final determination of how that works in those situations. Also, we clarified, because quite often this comes up, that notice, missing notice, a notice is not missing if it was properly posted in the U.S. mail. A post office delay or an incorrect tax office address is not in the ordinance inadequate notice, okay? Then the third category is nonconforming, Article Three. And we've got nonconforming uses of land, we've got nonconforming uses of structures, and we've got nonconforming structures. And your ordinance is set up this way, and it makes sense. Use of land can be something like parking tractors for sale, it's not a building, it's just the use of the land. Your existing ordinance is very restrictive. For example, you couldn't add additional merchandise or vehicles, that, that's pretty strict. What we changed, or changing this to, is if you're gonna expand the area of vehicle sales, for example, that's expansion nonconforming, but if it's the same area and you're just moving the cars in and out, that's not an expansion of nonconforming. So we, that's in there to clarify that. Same thing on issues of nonconforming uses of structure. A nonconforming use of structure is a building that, the building itself complies with the ordinance, but the use that's in it, and I'll use the example of a sexually oriented business, quite often you'll have one you annex, and suddenly it becomes a nonconforming use, and you have to be very careful how that's handled. There are provisions in here for expansion or alteration in size of a nonconforming You know, an office in a house sometimes is a nonconforming use, and so there's a process to handle that administratively. We also talk about nonconforming structures. This is a structure that use conforms, but it doesn't meet the setbacks or the height requirements or something, and there's a process. We clarified that and came up with some alternative provisions to that. So basically, the additional limitation and provisions, we've got a new provision that, again, allows the director to administratively authorize the expansion of a nonconforming use of structure by up to ten percent one time, so you can't do ten percent every year for ten years and double it, but up to one time, up to ten percent. After that, the Board of Adjustments can expand it up to, instead of twenty-five percent current ordinance, we said up to fifty percent in area or size. So we've given you more flexibility, because some of these uses you've annexed, and it's an awkward process to try to let them add on to their building, especially if it's, you know, like, you know, a fifteen percent addition, it gets real awkward. So this clarifies all that. If a use is destroyed, okay, a nonconforming structure usually is destroyed, and they, they come in, the Board of Adjustments can authorize reconstruction, and it used to say they have to come in within six months to ask for reconstruction. We've expanded that to one year, and again, they may have insurance issues and other things to make up their minds and try to figure it out. Then back to registration of nonconformity, the eighty-eighth regular session legislative requirements says you have three months to register the nonconformity. We're saying if you come in after that, and you can prove it was nonconforming legally, then, you know, you can still get that registered. Where the problem comes in is a requirement to stop or discontinue a nonconforming use. The way the current theory was, was that, you know, if you had a nonconforming business and had been there thirty years, and you hadn't invested any money in the building and the use of that location, then you had amortized your investment, and the Board of Adjustments through a process could require you to go out of business or to set a timeframe for you to amortize that business and go, and cease and conform to the zoning ordinance. The new statute has expanded that. In some aspects, it's actually better, but in some, it's not as good. So if, for example, a wrecking yard, a city wants, has a wrecking yard that's nonconforming and wants to put them out of business, and again, it's, it's a process where they gotta amortize their investment and get it back. The new statute says that the, the city has to, the city has to do a study, and the applicant has to determine how they want to be reimbursed. And one is, in any case, you gotta pay relocation expenses to that business, that's new, but also you pay difference in market value between the time they purchased the property, I'm sorry, between the time it became nonconforming and the current date. With property values, most of them actually probably are worth a lot more, so they probably won't owe you money, but the applicant also has the right to continue using that until that dollar amount is recouped. Again, you haven't done a lot of these, but there are cities that have had to do it. I've been involved in four or five, and that's how you get rid of some of those worst nonconforming uses, by going through a legal process and give it to the Board of Adjustments, and they get their day in court. So those are the provisions at this point. We think these administrative provisions will streamline things a lot, facilitate a lot of these projects, and help. The next phase is we'll be looking into the details of the use charts, the tree ordinance, and parking, those sorts of things in more detail, with a lot more stakeholders contacts to come up. I'll be glad to answer any questions. It's a, it's a lot to try to digest.
Counsel? Questions for Mr. Farmer?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corrigan?
Not so much a question, more just a comment. You know, this has been a long time coming. We've been talking about making changes and, you know, one-offs here and there as things come up. I appreciate the work that you've done along with the staff to get, get us to where we are currently. There's still a long way to go, and I think that there's a lot of changes coming, but this has been well into several years' worth of adjustments, and, you know, there's always gonna be things that change because of state law and whatnot, but I appreciate the work you've put in and continue to put in, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Other comments, questions of Mr. Farmer? No questions here. I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment, speak up? No one wants to speak up? I see no hands raised. Mr. Farmer, you see anyone? No? Okay. All right. Then I will go ahead and close the, close the public hearing, and I'd like to emphasize what Councilman Corrigan is saying. This is our, this is a great step forward, but it's not the last step. I mean, we're trying to get these ordinances clearly understood, clearly in English, and with the proper flow of approval process that helps both our staff make quicker decisions, and if there is an appeal, it gets to the elected officials of city council quicker, quicker than it might in the past, so that these can be quickly, quickly resolved. So other comments? No? I'm gonna go ahead and call for a motion on seven point two. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wadley?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty-three dash fifty as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes second, Mr. Vale, or Mr. Wadley made the motion. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved six and oh. Thank you, sir, for your time. Thank you, counsel. Let's go to number seven point three. It is also a public hearing. It's to consider a request of Mary M. Pike to minor plant a five-point-four-six acre tract of the Joshua Minette survey, abstract three fifty-two as lot one and two, block one of the Pike addition. The property is addressed as fifty-four sixty-four, fifty-four sixty-six, fifty-four sixty-eight, and fifty-four seventy, Acton Highway. Mr. Kaufman?
For the ease of flow of the meeting, I'm gonna turn over this item all the way through seven point nine to Ms. Wawie to just take it away when the time comes. So Kara, would you run us through these projects as they come up?
Sure. There we go. So the staff make a presentation, then the applicant stands ready. I see them behind me here. This will start with your site location map. The site is outlined in teal, it's existing, it's three boxes there. Those properties are proposed to be divided up, they want to sell a portion of the property. Oops. Okay. It's located in the city's ETJ, and it is not zoned, it is located off of Acton Highway as stated. There are improvements throughout the property. There are variances requested for, for this project, and we'll get to those here in a second. The city engineer is supportive of those variances, and the plat meets the requirements of the standards of the city, state for minor plating. So this was, is recreating those lots, and this is actually the utility plan, I believe, nope, that is the plat that you can see there. It's a little hard to distinguish the lots on the plat, but they are showing, and the access is, is common and provided to Acton Highway. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the variances by a seven to zero unanimous vote on July tenth, and they also recommended approval of the minor plat with the same vote also on July tenth. Staff is recommending approval with these variances mentioned, I would cover those. The first variance is to not extend water line across the frontage of the development, and the second variance is to not extend sanitary sewer line across the frontage of the, the development. The development has water and, and septic service. Staff is recommending approval of the minor plat, and if variances are approved as requested. These are your voting options, and I think your applicant is here for any, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Counsel, questions for Ms. Wawie? No questions? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to step forward and have anything to say about this item. I see no one stepping forward, raising their hands. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on approval, nonapproval of this?
Mr. Mayor?
Variances, yes.
Make a motion to approve the variances as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Vale, seconded by Ms. Burwell, and this is to approve the variances. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hear all opposed say nay. I hear no one say nay. The variances are approved at six and oh. The other option is to approve the minor plat, and do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Make a motion to approve the minor plat.
Mr. Vale makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes second. Call for vote. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved, we have approved the minor plat. Other actions on this item? No. Very good. That's approved six and oh. Okay, we'll go to number seven point four. Ms. Wawie, I'm gonna read this, public hearing, there will be a public hearing on this one as well. Consider a request of Pius de Souza to replat block, lot two, block one of South Town Center Edition as lots two R and lot two R one, block one of South Town Center Edition. The property is located south of North Plaza Drive and west of Harbor Lakes Drive. Ms. Wawie?
Thank you. This is your location map on this site outlined in teal. It has frontage on Plaza Drive, and next to that is a three seventy-seven. To the right of the site on this drawing is the Aldi Store Retail Development, and to the west are, is some storage facilities. The site has a retail building towards the, the frontage of Plaza and a hotel towards the back. The applicant seeks to split this lot into two lots, that's the purpose of the plat. The zoning is light commercial, and that's been that way for about twenty-two odd years. Surrounding area is also commercial and purposed for commercial properties. There are variances requested on this proposal. The first to not dedicate additional ten-foot of right-of-way on North Plaza, the second to not improve North Plaza Drive to urban standards, and the final is to provide a, a minimum lot width less than that required. The city engineer is supporting these variances as presented and as contained in your staff report. This drawing is the replat showing the division of the property into two properties. Access of the back lot to the street will be through an easement through that front property, so it will continue to have access through a shared access easement, will also have access to the east property. And, and the lot does have lot frontage along the, what's existing is Plaza Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on July tenth with unanimous seven-zero vote of the variances, and also recommend approval likewise with the replat. And staff is recommending approval of the variances request, as well as recommending approval of the replat. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel have questions for Ms. Wawie? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone want to step forward and speak on this item? I see no one stepping forward, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. So do I hear a motion to approve or deny the variances?
Mayor?
Ms. Burwell?
Make a motion to approve the variances as presented.
And that would be on item seven point four. Okay. Approve the variances. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds. Mr. Vale, seconds. Call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. The variances passes or approved 6-0. Next option is to approve or deny the replat.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley.
Make a motion that we approve the replat.
Motion's made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes second. Call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That, too, is approved 6-0. Thank you. We'll move to 7.5. Ms. Wawie, thank you.
Okay. 7.5 is a request to approve the request of Lydell Smith to replat Lot CD of Royal Oaks Edition as Lot CR of Royal Oaks Edition. The property is addressed as 5310 Acton Highway and 2620 Oaks Drive, PL 2023-08. This slide shows your location of the existing property. This proposal would combine two lots into one lot. The site is improved with an existing building which the property owner desires to expand to the north, onto the vacant lot there. And that's why they, they want to create one lot. There are variances associated with this request. The first variance is to not install and extend sanitary sewer service along the street frontages. This is in the Texas Water Utilities LPC, CN, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Granbury. It is served by the Texas Water Utilities LP, and extension of lines has not been requested by the, the provider. The second variance is to not extend sanitary sewer line, and same situation is at hand with the Texas Water Utilities LP, the CCN provider. The property is currently served by an onsite sanitary facility. And then the third variance is to not reconstruct Oaks Drive and Royal Lane to conform with the City of Granbury's master plan and general design criteria. Both roadways are in Hood County Maintenance Jurisdiction. Therefore, Granbury does not have jurisdiction of that roadway. Those statements are from your city engineer who supports the, the variance request. And this drawing shows the replat. The dark line in the middle of that drawing is not a lot line. It's just a, a combination of lines that indicate easements, and, and those are proposed to be removed, so it just looks like a heavy line. It's not a lot line. The Planning and Zoning Commission, with a vote of 7-0 on July 10th, approved both the variances as well as the replat for this property. Staff is recommending approval of the variances, as stated, as well as the replat. And these are your voting options for the variances as well as the replat. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Counsel, do you have questions on this? I have, just for my edification, why is this considered versus a public hearing? It says "consider." It doesn't say "public hearing." So, should it be a public hearing? Very good. I'll now open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak. Okay? I'm going to now close the public hearing. Okay. So, do I have a motion? Mr. Or did you need, did you want to?
I make a motion, uh, Mayor.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the variances.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0. Do I hear a motion to approve the replat?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I make a motion that we approve the replat.
Motion's made.
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a second. I call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The item number 7.5 is approved 6-0 total. Ms. Wawie, 7.6, which is also a public hearing.
So, this is to consider the adoption of ordinance 23-51, approving a request of Oneida Couch for Specific Use Permit to Allow Short-Term Rental STR Residential Unhosted in a residential 7,000 R-7 zoning district. This property is located, addressed as 510 West Doyle Street, case SUP-202316. This is your location map. The site is outlined in teal and is located, as stated, at 510 West Doyle Street. The neighborhood context is single-family residential. There are short-term rentals nearby. We'll have a slide that shows that here shortly. And the site is platted, so you can see on that aerial there the surrounding neighborhood that is residential. This is the zoning map. It shows that the property is zoned R7. It's also in the Historic Preservation Overlay District. There's no requested improvements on the site, so the Historic Preservation Overlay, Historic Preservation Commission hearing is not required. There is no history of short-term rental on this property, so this is the first one for this property, and the request is for a specific use permit, short-term rental, unh hosted, with two bedrooms. This slide will show the surrounding short-term rentals within 600 feet. That's the circle area, and they're shown in pink. They're nearby to the east and to the south and north. This is the site plan, showing the improvements on the property. There's an existing single-family residential structure on the, the west half and a accessory building to the upper right corner of the property. There are two parking spaces in the driveway for this site. Two parking spaces are required for the two bedrooms that are proposed. The applicant is going to install shrubbery to screen the parking lot headlight sweep on both sides of the driveway. One side of the driveway is off towards, the screening will be off towards the sideline, the side property line. This is the floor plan, showing that there are two bedrooms proposed, and then the living room, dining room, kitchen areas of the existing home. The specific use criteria is contained in your staff report in detail. I'll highlight the ones that we're requiring a condition for. And two, zoning ordinance 11.1A, specific use requirements, this meets three of the four criteria. Criteria number four requires a screening of the headlight sweep. Those are conditions that I just spoke to when I showed the site plan. Zoning ordinance 11.1B, specific use permit regulations, nine of 10 criteria also met. These deal with performance, which is, is primarily met when they're, the use is, you know, in operation and is tested at that time. But based on the information provided to the application, it appears that safety and public welfare will be accountable. Criteria number nine in this section also speaks to the screen of the headlight sweep, and that will be a condition that's proposed. Public notice was provided for this request on June 29th. We mailed 19 notices to owners of property on the tax roll and within 200 feet of the site, and notice was also published in the newspaper on June 20th. You'll find in your packet that we've received two letters in opposition to this proposal from, from those notified individuals. And we received no letters in support of the proposal. On June, on July 10th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP by a 7-0 unanimous vote with these conditions. These are our standard conditions that, that we typically require for short-term rentals. And the, this one is for a one-year expiration, which would be August 1st of 2024. As a reminder, in previous meetings, we've discussed that, that one year is for a new or perhaps underperforming. In this case, this is a new, new facility. Number two, tying the, the SUP to a site plan as well as the floor plan. Number three, requiring that screening of the headlight sweep. Four, five, six, and seven are standard conditions. Number four, limiting it to the number of two bedrooms that is proposed. And then five, six, and seven are the standard conditions, tying the requirements back to the zoning ordinance as well as city codes. Staff is also recommending approval of this proposal with the same conditions that we just reviewed. These are your voting options, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
Quick question. The letters in opposition in the packet discuss problems with long-term rentals. Have there been any, been any complaints on short-term rentals in this area that you know of, Kara?
I'm not aware of any complaints.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Kara, how do you, how do you monitor if, I mean, the floor plan is, can accommodate three bedrooms? And we see this all the time with some of the different floor plans that are submitted, but how do you monitor that they just use two bedrooms and not put a sleeping mattress in the other bedroom for overflow?
Understood. So, that, that can become difficult. We have a code compliance or code enforcement division out of our building inspection staff. They're charged with any complaints that are received. If they were made aware of, of a complaint, they would certainly investigate that. We also have a, a new technology that, that we're implementing. It should be up and running here in a week that, I say, screens the internet and finds the, the short-term rentals in our community. And then we have a database that they create for us that shows exactly what is being advertised. So, that's another method of, of monitoring and discovering if there's more, more bedrooms being leased than, than what is permitted.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I'm going to go ahead and open this to a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak at the public hearing? I see no one coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, do I hear a motion to approve as presented? Approve with additional or other conditions? Continue to the next public hearing? Or don't deny the request?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 23-51 as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made, motion seconded by Mr. Vale. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved 6-0. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Ms. Wawie. Do you want to grab a glass of water or anything at this point?
Thanks, I'm good for now.
We'll just keep going then. Move to 7.7. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.52, approving a request of Texas Tires for a specific use permit to allow the operation of an auto repair, minor business in a light commercial zoning district, and to allow daily outdoor display of wheels and tires. The property is addressed as 2106 East US Highway 377. Ms. Wawie.
Thank you. All right. Here's our first slide. We always start with the location slide. The site is here on 377, sandwiched between 377 and Old Granbury Road. It's outlined in teal. There's a existing tire repair facility in that building. It operates there. The, the site is entirely paved with parking, and this request would, would put in place a minor auto repair as well as daily outdoor display. Site context is commercial. This shows the zoning. The site again is outlined in teal, and the site is zoned light commercial. It's been that way since 2001. There have been a series of, of SUPs on this property from 2018, 2019, and 2020. When we looked at the history of the minor outdoor repair, minor auto repair, it was not clear whether that was a permanent allowed use or not. So, we look at this as a cleanup. We think that probably the record-keeping just needs to be cleaned up a little bit, and this will set that auto repair facility in good standing. As for the daily outdoor display, typically the city has issued that on a one-year basis, and, and this next one in 2020, after that first one, or the second, actually, was a three-year limitation. So, that is a, is truly a renewal. The surrounding area is commercial in nature, and this is the site plan. It's, they are outlined in the darker lines, showing the building as well as the parking in the area, and have a little bit of a blow-up of that site plan to show where they're proposing to put their outdoor display. And that's where that red dot is. The, the daily outdoor display has to move indoors to, for storage overnight, and then they can have it outdoor during the, the daytime. And so, they have just tires on, on a wheel rag. And that's, I had a little more close show to show you. The SUP criteria, I've also condensed those down. All four of the criteria in zoning ordinance section 11.1A are satisfied and can be, continue to be satisfied with good performance. Zoning ordinance 11.1B, specific use permit regulations, all 10 also can be satisfied, and if these are performed with safety and public welfare in mind, they will be accountable. Those are contained in your staff report as well. Public notice was mailed on June 29th to 15 property owners and also published in the Hood County newspaper on June 20th. We've received nothing in response in the way of support nor in the way of opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission on July 10th recommended approval, and I've split these out to the auto repair conditions and the daily outdoor display conditions. The commission voted of the SUPs with a 7-0 unanimous vote with these as conditions. The auto repair minor, without a term limit, the auto repair minor use and operations to conform to the site plan, and except as provided by these conditions, be subject to all zoning ordinance and city code requirements. And for the daily outdoor display, the SUP shall expire five years from the initial expiration date, so that would be August 1st of 28, and limited to an area not to exceed 10% of the gross building area as required per the zoning ordinance. And finally, except as provided in these conditions, subject to all zoning ordinance and applicable city code requirements. And staff has the same recommendation. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Kara, just remind me on the, go, go back one slide if you could. On the outdoor display, this is a SUP that is tied to the property or to the, the business itself?
The SUP goes with the property.
Goes with the property, and those SUPs can be pulled for, for any reason? Or what, what are the reasons for us to pull those?
So, if, if a operation comes into code enforcement, they, they issue a letter for us to, to have the operations conform with city codes with the SUP requirements as well. And there's a series of steps they have to go through, and once those are, are expunged, then they would go to court. The other option on SUPs is if the council is presented with considerations, then the council could hold a hearing to revoke the SUP.
So, even if it's a long-term SUP, or, or SUP without a term limit, we can go back and revoke that at any time? Is that what you're saying?
For cause.
For cause.
For cause.
Okay. But most of the time, these are not, they're, they're approved, and they continue on and on and on and on. I, I mean, this guy that's been here for this auto repair has had SUP for auto repair with minors, and to your knowledge, we haven't had any, any issues with him.
I, I haven't received any information on it. I queried our code enforcement staff. They do not have any outstanding violations or enforcement.
So, every year, every five years, they're going to come back for SUP for daily outdoor display? You see any issues with that, Chris?
No. It's, it's repetitive, but it's five years, and it is a special use permit, and so there needs to be something on it. It's a portable, moving display, and what we don't want them to do is roll that over and part, put it in the handicap spot.
Right.
And if that were to happen, you know, code enforcement would need to address it, and then if it continues to happen, you might need to review that as, as we continue on. And they have to come back. Instead of you revoking it based on a single complaint, there'd be a list of complaints that you would say, well, you know, we've given you this for, this would be the, I guess it'd be the, we went one, three, and now five. So, that'd be a total of nine years at the end of this five. So, that's just the way it's set up for an SUP for temporary display.
Okay.
And, and if we need to change that in our regulations, we can address that. As the phone calls come to you from our consultant, you might want to talk to him about those issues like that. Because these, this is truly an opportunity to, to address these things. But under our current rules, this is the way it is, and I have no problem with that. It's just, that's the rule. So.
Right, right. I, I just see it from a long-term standpoint. I mean, if, if they're not, they're doing everything by the book. I, I don't know how we're gonna, I don't know if you're gonna have a staff member track these SUPs and whether or not they get complaints. And then if they do get complaints, how many complaints warrant it to come before the council? That is, that is something that...
So, so just to kind of give everybody a, a general lay of the land, the, the permitting and inspection department has a file on every address that we provide service to. And we keep a record of that. And so, like, she reached out to, she's building official, and asked if there were any violations on this property prior to this meeting. So, if that question came up, she would know the answer. Well, what they do is they go in and look at that file of, of any complaint activity or any enforcement activity they've had to perform on that property. Regardless who owns it, that's, it's in that file for that address. And so, they can track that. And we don't go out and police all these. We, we do it based on complaints, just like we do for tall grass, or rubbish in the yard, or whatever. It's based on complaints. There's not, we don't have enough people to spend the time to drive around just looking for trouble. So, we've got enough trouble. When it comes our way, we're, without looking for it. But, you know, if we see a violation, we're gonna address it. It's on a very busy highway. You know, a senior citizen doesn't have a parking place, and they call and complain about it. We certainly have a legitimate need to go investigate and, and take care of that. But if we happen to see a violation in the course of doing our business, we will address that as well. But most of the time, code enforcement is based on citizen complaint, or council member complaint, or city manager complaint, or somebody that's seen something. It's my job to see these things. So, I, I'm, I'll take a picture and just send it. If I see a violation, if I see it, and I take a picture and send it to the right person, they take care of it from then. Maybe y'all call me with a violation, and I report that to them, and they take care of it from there. But it's truly based on observance. You know, if you've got a SUP in a little tucked-in neighborhood that nobody sees, it's a little harder to just see it without a complaint. You know, it's just like the, the BMBs. We, we're relying on people to complain if they're having a problem. We're relying on them to call the police department if they're having a noise problem at 10:30 at night, and the BMB's out of line. We, we hope that they call the police department. So, there's a record of that issue. And so, that's, that's how it works.
All right. And, and just, just for awareness, my thought was, you know, after five years, you know, well, I, I think at, at that point, they proved themselves for nine years. And at that point, I think without a term limit would maybe beneficial, but that's, that's what I'm thinking. And that's...
So, the, the issue is, is, you know, the businesses are bought and sold every day. And so, the, the, the original person that's operating a business that's been very careful to observe that SUP, sells the business. Maybe the new owner does or doesn't. So, you need to have that leverage to make sure we get compliance. You don't want to have to write a ticket every time something goes wrong. You want to be able to talk to them and say, look, this is what the rules are. This is what you need to do. And give them a, give them a little education because they're, they just bought the business or whatever. And then if they don't, then you've got to take more drastic steps. But if you give up, if you give up that...
Term limit.
That, that term limit of that, you're, you're, you're losing some of your authority for the SUP.
All right.
Now then, another situation is a car lot. They, they receive a, you know, an SUP to go build the Ford dealership. And it goes with the land, and there's not a renewal on that one. So, I don't know the harmony and how that works. But for an outdoor display temporary like this, it, it has a term limit. But if you're making an investment in building a building, and you're gonna sell used cars at your new car lot, and requires an SUP under our current code, well, we're not gonna revoke that unless you're doing something wrong. So, and then, you know, that's a big battle.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, other questions, comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Anyone want to come forward and speak on this matter? I see no one coming forward, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any more questions? Okay? Our voting options are to approve as presented, approve with additional or other conditions, and continue the item to the next public hearing, or deny the request. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2352 as presented.
Mr. Vale makes the ordinance, or makes the motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second on that. Call a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved, six and oh. Thank you, counsel. Ms. Wowie.
Thank you. So, this is item 7.8, public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 2353, approving a request of Addtech Inc. for a specific use permit to add a self-contained DEF dispensing unit to an existing fuel station in a light commercial zoning district. Property is addressed as 3905 East Highway 377, SUP 2023-17. This is your location map. The site is outlined in teal. It's an existing Kroger ga, gas station, or filling station. It has a very small convenience store on the property. Its primary use is for fueling of vehicles. The site is adjacent to commercial development, as well as unimproved property. The site is zoned light commercial, requires a specific use permit. In 2018, the fuel station was granted an SUP for 18 fuel positions, which this DEF will be considered a new fuel position. Because they are adding a fuel position, that affects their site plan, affects their operations, and that's why they're, they're coming in for an SUP. DEF is diesel exhaust fuel product additive, and it's required, it helps to clean the air, by clean air. This is the site plan. It may be a little difficult to see on that screen. To the upper right of the site plan is a blue dot, and that is the DEF fuel position. When we look at the, the location of that, we examine the site plan to assure that fire safety is accommodated for access and, and fire control. If there are any emergencies, they need access. We also look at onsite circulation to assure that onsite vehicle movement can continue to occur. And we find that both of those reviews are satisfied. You will notice there are about four parking spaces to the south or bottom of the blue dot where the DEF fuel position will be. Those provide parking spaces for customers, as well as employees on site. Had the, the convenience store, that little store where payment and help is provided, had it been larger, like a regular convenience store, or the larger convenience stores, we would have had concerns about the placement of the DEF there. However, it's not expected that vehicles will be blocked in for a considerable amount of time. I think most of the times that I've been out there, the parking spaces have been unused. So, wanted to point that out. And these are drawings of the DEF. We did not require conditions to any particular unit. This drawing shows a couple of units, and there's, just gives you an idea what it'll look like. If you haven't seen these before, I, I certainly have found this new. So, about three different types. And we also have the SUP criteria in section zoning ordinance 11.1A. All four can be satisfied, as well as in section 11.1B. When performance is done in a safe way and in consideration of public welfare, those will be accountable. And public notice was provided on June 29th to 10 property owners nearby, and also in the newspaper on June 20th. We have received no letters in favor nor in opposition to the request. On July 10th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP by a seven to zero vote. With these two conditions, all operations and site improvements shall be in general conformance with the site plan, that's in your ordinance proposed as Exhibit A, and then a standard condition tying it back to the zoning ordinance and city code requirements to perform in compliance. Staff has the same recommendation of, with those conditions. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions for Ms. Wowie?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Kira, is this the first devastation in Granbury?
It's the first one I'm aware of.
Yes. Well, congratulations for the first devastation to that owner, to Kroger. So, I've been wanting one of these. And I'm sure all the diesel owners have been wanting one of these, that you can dispense instead of having to use the, the alternative version of a box. So, that's awesome. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public, uh, public hearing on this. Anyone'd like to come forward and speak? I see no one coming forward, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented, approve with additional other conditions? Ms. Burwell.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the ordinance 2353 as presented.
Ms. Burwell moves to approve the ordinance 2353 as presented. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Rodriguez will second that. Call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved, six and oh. Thank you. Ms. Wowie, 7.9.
There you go. This is a public hearing to consider the opt, option of ordinance number 23-54, approving a request of Kathy Casey and Jim Leach to amend the existing plan development with base district of R10, zoning adopted by ordinance number 1957, to refine and clarify the operation of the existing bed and breakfast hosted uses on the site. The property is addressed as 205 and 221 West Doyle Street, Z 2023-07. I'm gonna spend a, a little bit of time on this site context, location map. I want to, to share some background on this site. The, the site has a history of zoning to PD with a base of residential district. It's commonly known, or it's, it's business is the inn on Lake Granbury, and it's been there for about 20 years. The purpose of this PD is to help clean up the existing PD to create a, a better record of the zoning for the property. The neighborhood context is residential, as well as short-term rentals. The site size is three acres, which meets the PD requirement. The minimum acreage size is, is three acres for a PD. So, you can see there, the surrounding area, the site fronts onto the lake, as well as Doyle Street, and residential and short-term rental uses are to the east and to the west, as well as the north. I think we've included a buffer map to show you where those are. Should've started on this slide, I guess. Sorry about this. 20 years' operation. The site operates with 15 bedrooms. There are three buildings, two houses, and a pool house. And I used the wrong terms. I apologize. I think that, that the owner uses different terms to, to describe those various buildings. And there are two accessory buildings. The, starting from the upper right side of the site, there's a house. And then there's a long garage building. And in that building is conference room, dining room, kitchen, office, and maintenance spaces. There's a small accessory building, kind of in the middle of the site, which is decoration prep space. There's a, a pool, a garden-like area, and lake frontage. There's a, a pool house, which contains some of the, the guest room and accommodations. And then there's the final house that's on the left side of the site, which also has guest rooms. Parking is, is provided at the front of the site off of, off of Doyle Street. There's adequate parking for all of these short-term rental guest room bedrooms. And parking is also provided off of the side street there next to the garage building. So, this site is zoned PD R, R10, but it also has an overlay in the historic preservation district, the overlay district. The Historic Preservation Commission approved a request for a garage screen, or a refuse, refuse container screening that sits towards the front of the site off of Doyle, just as you get into the parking lot. It functions, functions well for the existing facility. And with that screening, it will improve the, the appearances for the site. So, this shows the zoning as existing. The surrounding area is R10 and residential, as mentioned. The purple is the, the plan development. It's hard to show the, the historic overlay, but indeed, it does have historic overlay district. This is future land use plan map. I included this just to demonstrate that it is residential recommendation. Future land use plan amendment is not required, and it is in conformance, as it has been zoned with that PD, and is residential in nature. And the comprehensive plan supports bed and breakfast, short-term rentals in this area. This is the buffer map that I mentioned, that shows the nearby short-term rentals outlined in pink. And there's also some that are outlined in black. I think we need to change that color code. It's hard to see those, those ones. But there's one, it's called the Captain House. It's right next door to the east. Wow. That's hard to, to see. I hope your, your monitors can pick that up. That's the site plan. This site is made up of two separate properties. And I'd like to point out, at, at this stage, the, the separation line for these properties is basically straight down the east line of the west driveway that comes into the property. And so, the east side of the property is addressed as 205 West Doyle. And that side of the property contains nine of the bedrooms that, that have been active on the property. And the west side of that line is 221 West Doyle, which has six bedrooms. So, with, with that statement, I'd like to reflect for the record to modify the ordinance that was presented in your packet to reflect that, that nine bedrooms are on 205 West Doyle, and six bedrooms are on 221 West Doyle. So, I went over the location of, of the buildings, and the parking, and the uses. In the zoning ordinance, specific to zoning considerations are criteria for which you should make zoning decisions. And these are included in your staff report. They, they basically ask questions whether or not the zoning that's proposed can be supported by the community. And this PD is existing. It's just a cleanup. There's no intensification of use. So, all of the, the answers to these questions are in support. Public notice was provided June 29th, 23. We mailed out 23 public notices to property owners, and we also published on June 24th in the Hood County News. We've received no letters in opposition, nor in favor of the, the proposal. And I'll go over the proposed ordinance items with you. I don't think I've got my slides in, in, let me look at this. Yep. I think I, I missed some slides here maybe today. I've got those missed, but let's see what happens here. Yep, they're there. Thank you. We're recommending approval of this, and I'll go over the, the requirements for the PD here in a second. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the request with a vote of seven zero at their July 10th meeting, subject to the proposed PD standards and conditions, and contained in the staff report. And these are those standards and conditions. Staff is recommending approval as well. So, it would be an R10-based district. The, the document in your, your packet shows all of the standards that would be varied from, that have been varied from, from, you know, historically on these properties. The, the, some of them that stand out as, as, as begging to be called out, that I'd like to cover, are the parking lot sweep, which is our standard condition for... the parking lot sweep, which is our standard condition for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. Their parking lot there in the front, which has maybe 20-plus parking spaces, currently does not screen to the west. There are a number of utility lines in the area of the parking that's there to the west, and there's a gas line that makes some plants hard to grow. So that's one of the reasons that they'd like to continue to not have the screening, although we have condition to screen. There may be an opportunity that isn't obvious right now, but maybe a fence could go along there to provide some screening. The use itself is bed and breakfast and short-term rental, and that's historically been that way. There's a requirement that if it's used as a bed and breakfast hosted, that the host live within 300 feet of the site or onsite. Short-term rental, that would be the host would not be living on the property. Let's see. So combined, there's a maximum of 15 bedrooms total on both properties, and I just went over that, the number and which side of the property those belong to. The properties improvements have some deviation from side yards that it's not new construction, it's just the way those buildings have been built and existed for many, many years. Let me back up. There's also two enclosed garage spaces on 205 West Doyle. Let's see. And the other site, then, the garage spaces that are existing are used as part of the operations. However, if the properties were ever to convert back to residential, they would have garage spaces. That's why that is something we look for when we review these and is in the ordinance. So parking is required to be off-street and behind the front building line, it's existing in front, as shown on the site plan. That's for the big parking lot, as well as on the side street. There's some that's in front of the building, been that way for many years. The vehicles are required on an improved hard surface. And I'd like to clarify this for people that might have watched the PNC meeting. When we were invited to take a look at this, the site staff was, and when we walked the site, the west driveway appeared to be decomposed granite. Actually, that area is asphalt parking covered by decomposed granite. So it has a hard surface. Just wanted to clarify that for you. Accessory building is not permitted in the front yard setback. There's a carriage house in the front yard setback. These are all existing conditions, there are setbacks and so on. And that's my point of when I opened the, or began presenting the item, that this is just cleanup. It clarifies and establishes the setbacks and other site conditions as they're existing, as well as the operations. So our conditions also require that the site conform to the site plan as Exhibit B in the staff report and the floor plans as Exhibit C. There's a decorative fence that would continue to be maintained. There's a condition that goes back several years, that no live band or audio equipment shall be allowed on the site, addressed as 221 West Doyle Street. Looking into the history of that, that was requested by a neighbor, and so we included that to honor the history of that condition, even though we do have a noise ordinance. And then this is the condition that staff needed to clarify about the FA there needs to state nine, and the F, I'm sorry, that's E. EA should state nine initially, and then as you go further into that, and six. And then EB needs to state nine first, and then on the second line, it should be six for the number of bedrooms, to get that clarified. And these just pull forward the other conditions that followed with the former PDs for the site plan development approvals in the past. And then we have your standard voting slide. This is quite involved, and I know I summarized quite a bit on those conditions. I hope I wasn't confusing, but if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Counsel? Mr. Kaufman.
I just want to thank you, Kara, for doing a great job putting this together. I know that it was probably painful walking through inheriting a plan development such as this, and I'm sure that Jim and Kathy appreciate what you've done. I appreciate their patience. They are an outstanding local business here in Granbury, and we can't thank y'all enough for what you do for our community. So we're excited to see this come about and keep moving forward.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Kara, I had one question on the variance. Is this, we have on 205 West Doyle, let's see, where does it say? The accessory building floor area, maximum 420 square feet, and then the variance is approximately 6,990 square feet?
Right. So the large accessory building to the east of the property where the conference room and the dining hall.
Oh, you call that an accessory building?
Yes, sir.
I was looking for a storage shed. That's a pretty good size. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Corrigan.
Just for a point of clarification, if we vote to approve as presented, is that including the corrections made verbally, or do we need to specifically notate those corrections? Maybe a question for Jeremy.
Yeah, just, I would recommend adopting it as presented, and that way it would telegraph through to the true intent of what she was trying to communicate.
Excellent.
Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward, do appreciate your patience, Ms. Casey, Mr. Leach. No one's coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented, approve with additional other conditions, or continue the item, or deny?
Mayor.
Mr. Corrigan?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Ms. Burwell, go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to approve ordinance 2354 as presented.
As presented.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds, Ms. Burwell made the motion. I will call the vote. Does anybody, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh. Thank you, Ms. Wowie. We'll move to seven point one oh. Set the date, time, and place for a public hearing to receive public input on the city of Granbury proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual operating budget. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. It's that time of year again where we need to set a date and time for place for the public hearing, and staff recommends that we do it at our September 5th meeting, Tuesday, September 5th at 6:00 PM, right here at 116 West Bridge Street. And I might add also that the draft budget is available online to anybody that wants to seek it. It's granbury.live/2024budget. We'll pull up that 368-page document, and y'all feel free to review it. Call me at any time, citizens. My door is open to you to discuss anything you might have in that budget you'd like questions about. I'm here to help and explain. It's written in an award-winning format, as history has proved itself, and staff has done a great job putting it together. And it is, it is, can't really talk about it tonight because that's not what we're doing, but we're setting a date and time for the public hearing to receive public comment.
Do you want to repeat that date?
September 5th at 6:00 PM at City Hall, right here in the luxurious comfort of our suite here, Council Chamber Suite. It is a nice place, you've got to admit. That tile ceiling is just incredible.
I'm just trying to get to it. Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to set the date, time, and place for a public hearing to receive the public input on the city of Granbury proposed?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez. And that would be September 5th at 6:00 PM.
September 5th, 6:00 PM. At the Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas.
Very good. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale has second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. It approves six and oh. Number seven point one one. Discuss the proposed 2023 property, the ad valorem tax rate for the city of Granbury, and vote on the proposed 2023 tax rate to be placed on the future agenda for adoption.
You ready?
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is a motion to adopt a tax rate not to exceed 38.5 cents per $100 valuation. Again, the date and time of that would be placed on the future agenda for adoption on September 5th, the same night as the public hearing. We're required to have one public hearing because we are raising the tax from 38 cents to 38 and a half cents, or proposing to do so. That's where we're at.
Is it 2023?
Well, that's what we call it on the tax roll. This is 2023, 2024 budget, but the tax is for 2023.
Okay. Counsel, discussion? Do I hear a motion to?
So moved. I recommend that we place a proposal to adopt the 2023 property tax rate not to exceed .385 cents per $100 valuation on the agenda item for September 5th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Mayor, I might just add that you need a roll call vote on this agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Corrigan?
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second, yes.
Second.
Mr. Vale seconds. Call a roll call vote, Mr. Corrigan.
Aye.
Mr. Corrigan, aye. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Can't write that fast. Mr. Wilding?
Aye.
Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Ms. Burwell? Mayor Jarrett?
Aye.
So we got it. Passed six and oh. All good? Very good. Okay. Discuss and consider adopting resolution number 23 dash 14 to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAD, and request the refunding the reserve funds of in excess of $2 million that the HCAD has accumulated over the previous years of assessing the operating cost to the respective taxing entities.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Before we continue this item, I just ask if legal, the attorney, city attorney, if there's any conflict of interest.
Attorney.
Mayor, Mr. Rodriguez and I have discussed the issues. I cannot determine for him if there is a conflict of interest. He has to make that determination for himself. If he believes that there is a conflict of interest or any sort of ethical obligation, I've advised him of my considerations, and he is aware of that, but that's a decision that he will have to make.
Very good.
According to our ordinance of conflict of interest, can you state anything that I'm in violation of?
You looking to counsel, or are you looking to me?
The city attorney.
As to specifically what?
To make a vote or to vote on this item.
Again, I don't know what your financial interests are. I don't know your personal financials. I don't know if you have any interests of 10% or greater, or property interests of $2,500 or more that would be affected by all of this. Those would be 171 and 176 issues that you would have to make the determination of whether they affect you or not, and if there would be the necessity for you to conflict yourself out and file the necessary affidavits for those types of conflicts. As far as any other types of conflicts, whether ethical or otherwise, I've not heard any conversation or anything at this point to be able to say, it's my belief or understanding that there is any sort of an ethical issue.
All right. I just want, for the record, just rules and procedures, conflict of interests stated as each member of the city council has a responsibility of staying from voting or participation and deliberation on any matter in which he or she has a conflict of interest, as defined by state law, and such conflict of interest shall be clearly stated by the person for purpose of record. Otherwise, all members of city council qualify to vote, are required to vote either yea or nay on all proposed ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Well, I think as the rules and procedures say there, it's up to the individual to identify that conflict of interest. That's you, correct?
I have not identified any conflict of interest.
That's what I'm hearing. You've identified no conflict of interest. Okay. We will consider to, we will go ahead and discuss and consider adopting the resolution to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood County Central Appraisal District and request the refund in the reserve funds of in excess of $2 million that the HCAD has accumulated over the previous years of assessing the operating cost to the respective taxing entities. I put this on the agenda myself after attending the budget review for the HCAD, which was chaired by Mr. Rodriguez, and he is on that board. And, you know, as I said earlier, where did I lose my stuff here? I have some notes on that. The, I want to make sure that, give you some history of how I got into this and where I've fallen down, and then I listen to each of you and your opinions on this. But in 2020, January 1 of 2022, the budget was established, the budget for the budget of 2022 was established in 2021. The current board did not take office until January 1, 2022. So this, the 2022 budget that we talk about, the dollars and the activity that we talk about there, that budget was set before this board walked in. And this board was actually picked by the city, county, and the school board. We asked these individuals, would they, and there was more than just these individuals, but we asked the individuals, would you participate in this voluntary role to serve our community? And they stepped forward. We had a ballot by a proportional amount of every how many dollars we have that we get from the tax, that's the number of votes divided by five times 1,000. There's a formula that gives you the number of votes. As you might expect, the school board, or the school ISD has by far the most votes. County next, city next, and that total right there will get you up to, what, 85, almost 90% of the voting, the people that can vote for the directors. Okay? So that group of gentlemen stepped in, with one exception who was held over from the previous board. On January 1, 2023, the budget had been prepared by our chief appraiser, who you, I have heard earlier, had resigned May 31 of this year, 2023. So that budget's been prepared, it's now handed over to the individuals that have been in office 14 months, 15 months to complete. The chief appraiser in that period of time also was preparing the 2024 budget. And so I'm asking, I'm laying this out simply to identify where these budgets came from, because in 2022, 2023, adopted as adopted, there were significant increases in the budget itself. So looking at these budgets, I get led to productivity. I'm saying if we're going to increase the budget... I'm saying if we're gonna increase the budget by twelve percent in twenty twenty-two, twenty-seven percent in, uh, twenty twenty-three, and another five percent in twenty twenty-four, what are we doing to manage and control our expenses? As I looked at it, further looked at it, I realized that the output or the, uh, unit that is, uh, the, the, the task, if you will, is to appraise parcels. Now parcels can be, uh, any form, fashion, or, or whatever. They can be apartments, they can be, uh, uh, ranch land, they can be, uh, raw land, uh, improved land. So it's, the, that's a parcel, but the parcels over a period of time, you should be able to take your budget, divide it by the parcels, and get, here's what a parcel, uh, here's what the cost to appraise a parcel is. In twenty twenty-two, it was thirty-two point eight cents. In twenty twenty-three, it went to forty-one point two, and now it's looking at forty-two point eight three. Uh, the imper- uh, the increase on that, that's, uh, you know, it's a thirty, thirty point four percent increase to, uh, to do a parcel. Not, and you can look and you say, well, we've been growing, we've been growing. Our parcels have grown one and a half to two percent, year over year over year, and I'm not, I get that information from the Controller of Texas website for appraisal districts. Every appraisal district, two hundred and fifty, I think it's two hundred and fifty-two, there's not really two hundred and fifty-four, but those appraisal districts, every one of them submit the number of parcels that they did, their annual budget, the annual salary of the, uh, appraiser, the annual salary of the chief appraiser, the number of arbitrations that they have, the, uh, what the arb cost, what the arb costs are. There's a massive data there, and when you go to it, you can just drop it into an Excel spreadsheet, and you can, you know, check it one way or the other. And that way, I know that from a productivity standpoint, we have, we're not doing well. And I think that was alluded to by one of the speakers earlier, that, uh, even the, uh, new man that has come in to, uh, take us over or to, uh, assist us until we find a new chief appraiser recognizes that we have a productivity issue. So parcel units for this past three years are up about four percent. Unit costs on a parcel basis are up thirty percent. So look at that, go back to the budget and say to myself, well, like, you know, there's gotta be some opportunity, some opportunity here. And as I dig through the, uh, budget, there is opportunity. Mr. Hafe, uh, is still here. He pointed out some of those opportunities. For one, we're starting off with the proposal of saying, we're gonna take in three million plus. We're going to expend three million. It's minus two hundred and sixty-seven thou- thousand dollars. You already are building in a, uh, budget that is, uh, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of what I would call in the business world, fat. And, uh, so we have to pay taxes on that. That's our tax money that's going into that. We're buying a service, and I'm acknowledging that I'm gonna buy that service at a premium, and I see no premium service that I'm getting. I get a little further into it, and I find that there is a two-point something. It could be, the, the numbers, uh, depending on which, uh, where you are at some point in time, the numbers are either two-point-two, two-point-six, or two-point-eight, and at the end of this coming year with the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar, uh, 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 revenue less, or, uh, expense less than budget, that favorable gain, if you will, it'd be three million dollars. But I find there's something over two million dollars that have been accumulated year over year without being, uh, allocated back to the community, or to the taxing entity. So I go to our joint agreement. How do we agree with, what do we agree with the H. C. A. D.? And it says, and this is written in nineteen eighty, and it continues through today. We have a, it's an ongoing continuation. "In the event that payments received in any one year exceed the actual cost of providing services pursuant to this contract, the Central Appraisal District shall either reimburse the jurisdictions or credit future payments to be made by jurisdictions to the extent of the excess funds." These funds were not, um, uh, reimbursed back to the entities. I go to the tax code, and the tax code says exactly the same thing. I go to the appraisal district director's manual, which is their training program. It says the same thing, except, no, it says it a little bit different. It says they must be returned. Now that disagrees with the tax code. I think I'd have to go with the tax code. I go to the Central Appraisal District's annual audit. This is the twenty twenty-two audit. It says that they must be returned. These assets are not available for future spending. And it further goes in and identifies the total cost of all governmental activities as something less than what, uh, is reported in the budget presentation that we receive. So based on that, I, like I'm saying, started with a productivity problem, in my mind. We need to be doing better for our, uh, our, uh, our county, citizens, uh, school board, or citizens, parents, et cetera, anybody that's paying taxes in this, in the county. And I challenge the, uh, uh, the, uh, H. C. A. D. to do that. I also challenge them to, uh, assess their, um, overall accounting, their processes, and to possibly even come back and, uh, you know, get a, uh, stronger audit group, because I go through the audit, and I find, uh, just way too many questions that a layman would ask during an audit, uh, presentation. And I question how we even got, how we even have this budget, because it's not the budget that was presented on Janu- on, uh, July the nineteenth that was to be amended by a hundred thousand dollars. It's significant, significantly different, and this budget has to be approved by the H. C. A. D., who has to notice that there's gonna be a public meeting, and none of that's happened. So there's enough, uh, uncertainty here that I recommend that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood Central, uh, Appraisal District. But I would like to hear from other counsel. Comments? Questions? Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I just comment.
Mr. Vale?
Well, thank you for, thank you for the, let me have work that you've done to, to look at this. I mean, obviously, we, we received a copy of the budget and the audit as well, um, and I would concur, uh, with your comments and also Mr. Hafe's comments that there's some inconsistencies there, and, and obviously, if there's two million dollars sitting there that should have been returned back to the, uh, uh, taxing entities, then if that had not been done, then, um, it sounds like it's fairly clear that that should be done. So, um, so thank you for that.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll ask the, uh, the city attorney if he's had the, uh, time to review the attorney general's opinion on G. A. ten forty.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with it.
Can you, can you tell me if the, uh, tell me what your thoughts of that is in comparison to what was just stated?
Uh, ten forty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it, uh, ten forty clarifies a lot of the issue. Um, I think there seems to be some contention of whether or not, um, certain amounts of funds can be, um, budgeted in a specific way. In this case, uh, ten forty deals with two separate issues. One has to do with, uh, funding of county employees, which is the primary issue of ten forty, and then the second aspect of it, uh, a more ancillary issue is the obligating, uh, funds to capital improvement projects, uh, through an appraisal district, right? And so I don't think anyone's articulated an argument that, um, it's not legal. I think the issue in this particular case is that it was done incorrectly. When you budget for capital improvement, and you say you're gonna spend ten thousand dollars, and at the end of the year you have excess of, well, you know, I'm just gonna make up some numbers, a million dollars, um, that same opinion goes on to say that there's no automatic appropriation of excess funds into capital improvement just because the appraisal board says we're gonna move it over there. Um, and in fact, that opinion, as, as well as, uh, chapter six of the tax code, says there's a process that you go through. So there's an automatic, um, presumption in the law under the tax code that, under section six oh six J., the excess funds are to be allocated back to, as credits, if done within the first hundred and fifty days, to each of the taxing entities. And if you get outside of that hundred and fifty days, then they're to be allocated back in the form of a refund. Um, that opinion also goes on to say that there is a, a way in which that's done. So when you have these excess funds and you didn't line item budget for it, which i- is, is not, um, the definition of an obligation, line iteming something in a budget does not obligate it, a contract, or entering into some sort of an agreement, even maybe if it's done in the future, but at least if you contract for it, you've obligated it. Just putting it as a line item is not an obligation. Um, so those funds were never obligated. What happened is, from ten forty and the tax code, it was moved over, uh, at the discretion of, of, of the appraisal board at that time. Not you guys understand that, but the appraisal board at that time. And so when you go through six oh six and ten forty, it says, well, here's how it should have happened. What should have happened is, we wanna move this over so we have the ability, I believe under six oh six C., to do an amendment, C. or D. And they can. And so in order to do a, an amendment to the budget, what they have to do is, they have to send out a notice thirty days before they take action on that amendment to each of the taxing units. Then they can take the action on it. And then chapter six ten tells us, the tax code six ten says, if we don't like an action other than adopting the original budget, so this amendment is not the adoption of the original budget, each taxing unit has fifteen days to go back and say, we disapprove. And that doesn't require a, uh, uh, three-quarters vote. It only requires a majority on an amendment of the taxing units to go back and say, uh, we, we, we disapprove of that. And if you get a majority, then that action is revoked. So the problem becomes, and my question, um, to the appraisal district, uh, which didn't receive the answer that I was anticipating, was where are the notices that were sent out for these amendments? And I was told, yeah, we don't, we don't have any. No notices were sent out. Okay, so you, you, you made an amendment to your budget, you allocated the funds over to capital improvement that you didn't have, um, obligated and you didn't use, but now you wanna keep it instead of giving it back and complying with six oh six J. And the response is, well, we did it, um, and we didn't send the notices out. We didn't comply with the law that, that attorney general opinion ten forty and chapter six of the tax code required, but instead, what we did is, we just made another budget next year, and since nobody said, hey, wait a minute, what happened last year? We just took that as a waiver and an acquiescence and said, oh, well, you agreed to it. Well, I guess that's a question for a court to decide if that's acquiescence or not. Um, the fact that the procedures from the attorney general opinion, the very attorney, a general opinion that the, uh, appraisal district is relying on tells them, the problem is, is that they wanna read half of it and stop. You gotta read the entire opinion, and it goes on to say very clearly, here is how it should have happened. It didn't happen that way. Um, so, you know, my suggestion is, for whatever it's worth, is that, number one, I think it's pretty clear, not, i- i- in, not just as, as a city attorney, but, um, as, as a taxpayer who, who's looked at the budget, it's not balanced. There are a number of issues in there. There i- are some, uh, what I personally consider, um, unnecessarily inflated numbers. Um, when you, when you're doing A. B. C. this year, and you did A. B. C. last year, and A. B. C. last year cost ten thousand, it would seem to me that, you know, I get inflation and stuff. May it's, maybe it's eleven thousand, not thirty thousand this year. Then a lot of the numbers don't make sense to me. So, um, if you, if you don't like how the budget is, and you, you are, as a counsel, insistent that you believe that there should be a reimbursement of those funds, which I believe there is a reimbursement due on those funds, then, then my suggestion to you would be to, um, disapprove the budget, pass your resolution to disapprove the budget, and, uh, work on a new budget with the appraisal, with the new appraisal, uh, board that's there now. Try to work out a budget that is inclusive of those refunds that are due.
Other comments, counsel? I'd like to add to, uh, what, uh, counsel has added here. It indicates, uh, dollars that are, you, you look and you shake your head and say, why? The verbiage in the twenty-two twenty-two budgets, uh, or the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four budget says, uh, we have budgeted for aerial, uh, uh, charting and photography. We do it every other year. But the budget calls for fifty-eight thousand dollars to be spent every year. I don't know if this is one of those years or not, but you look at it and you say, if you do it every other year, you budget it every other year. And also, I'd like to just read from the, uh, Hood County, or the Hood Central Appraisal District, the final audit record for the year ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, page nine. Down around in the middle, it says, General Fund Budgetary Highlights. Amendments to the original twenty-two general fund annual budget were primarily related to increased building maintenance and additions to capital outlay for the new building. The only problem with that is, there were no amendments. You have to request the amendment, you have to take it to the taxing entities. We are one of those. There are nine others. And then it has to be approved. There were no amendments, which is why I mentioned to the board, maybe you wanna look at your auditor, 'cause I question how this audit got, uh, uh, you know, I question the numbers there. It's not right. Doesn't add. Other questions?
I do have a comment that I put, uh, tax code six point oh six in your agenda packet so you can go to it and reference it. You'll need to refresh your, uh, Granicus app, but it will populate that document for you. I highlighted the sections related to the conversations tonight, uh, in yellow, uh, where the statute is clear. It's about nonapproval procedures. It's about, uh, budget amendment procedures, um, and finally, the refunding, uh, procedures if, if that were to occur. So I know that, uh, uh, everybody is wanting to do what's right, and, uh, I believe the appraisal district, uh, folks, they're, they're sincerely trying to do it right as well. And so I don't want, I, I, I think my, my concern out of this whole conversation tonight is, and, and, and ongoing through the next month probably, is these are good people that are serving in, in very valuable positions, and we don't need to undermine, um, who they are and what they stand for. They're good people, and they inherited a, a, a bag of tricks, and we've got to unwind this somehow. And fortunately, they've got a great consultant interim, and he's walking them down the path of, of good choices, and I think that with time, this is, it's gonna be healed, and it's just, it's just gonna take some time, so.
Other? Anyone else? Okay. Since it's, um, my agenda item, I will, or Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
I, I'm just here if y'all want any additional insight. Um, so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation of any questions y'all have.
When can we get our money back? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. I'd like to make, make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen to disapprove the proposed budget from the, uh, Hood Central Appraisal District, H. C. A. D., and request the refunding, re- the reserve funds of in excess of two million dollars to the, the, the H. C. A. D. has accumulated over the previous years of assessing the operating cost to the respective taxing entities. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Burwell seconds. As a comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. It is passed six and oh. Thank you. We'll now go to number eight point oh. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. The city council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not on the agenda. We have, uh, five minutes, and I think I have, uh, two people that would ask to speak. Ms. Cindy Peters? That's not her. And, uh, no, that's not her. And Mr. Dave Eagle. And Mr. Dave Eagle. And this, it's the same time limit, Mr. Eagle, it's three minutes.
Dave Eagle again, 2615 Hillside, I get to bat cleanup. First of all, I want to comment that I agree, this is a great venue. This is a really great venue. Y'all did a good job with this, and it's real fancy for sure. And I also want to point out that there, I want absolutely zero dispersions coming from me towards the current board. Mr. Frye and the other members of the board, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm not calling anybody out personally, from my viewpoint. I don't think anybody in commissioners' court singled anybody out personally. This is not about anybody on that board. It's about the, it is about what's been going on that's been out of their control. And, Mayor?
Yes.
This, the, the comments that are being made have a relationship to an agenda item.
I agree. Do you have some general, more general comments?
Yes. I want to talk about the appraisal review board.
Mayor?
It's not on the agenda. We're talking about the budget.
It's HCAD, which is the Hood Central County Appraisal District.
So Mr. Rodriguez wants to shut me up. That's what I'm hearing. He came to commissioners' court yesterday, and he, he hollered out, he pointed out to me, am I against growth? As, as a means to come after me? I want to address that point there.
Well, it's, you know.
This is open mic, Mayor.
No, but our rules and procedures also do not allow you to address the individuals on the council, you talk to me.
Okay, a council member came to commissioners' court yesterday and asked me about the concept of growth. And I, I would posit that, what does that mean? I've heard elected officials talk about quality of life, and you go, what does that mean? What does quality of life mean? It means whatever the beholder wants it to mean. I'm, I'm going to talk about growth for a minute. I'm certainly against growth of cancer cells. I'm against the growth of my belt line, I wish it, I wasn't growing that as much. I'm against the growth of anti-American sentiment. So an open-ended question, am I against growth, is a, is a deflection, and has no bearing in an issue like we had yesterday in commissioners' court. So since I'm being shut up about the rest of it, the appraisal review board, which I think is pertinent, and has nothing to do with this agenda, the agenda item currently that was on the agenda, 7.14, I will just walk away. Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thanks, sir. See, I have no one else out here. I do want to make one comment. I know that many of you sat here and watched a very fast-moving council with a lot of items that were covered. Please do not interpret there in any way, form, or fashion that is due to a lack of interest. I would ask that you interpret that as just some outstanding upfront preparation by our staff. You saw that exhibited by Ms. Waughie right here. And also, a council that does their homework, and they ask their questions up beforehand. I know this gentleman to my right here has, you know, there's somebody on the phone, somebody in his office every two weeks as we get closer to this occasion. So thank you, thank all of you. Is there any other comments than otherwise? Do we have a need for an executive session? Okay. All right. Ms. Walker, did I get a, let's go to executive session forum this week? Okay. These change. I now declare that the Grandberry City Council is convened into open session, and all members are present at the city council, going to closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. And section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. Okay, we're ready to reconvene. I now declare that the Grandberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Counsel, anyone have any new business? I see there's no new business. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.